When you're ready, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, folks. Ben, at this time, will you please call the roll?
Member Shroya?
Here.
Member Soretta?
Here.
Member Revolt?
Here.
Member Fonte?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Peters?
Here.
And member Folt?
Here.
Seven present.
All right. Thank you. Next up, for your consideration, I need a motion and a second to approve as presented. Minutes from City Council on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty.
Motion to approve as presented. Folds.
For a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, next up, recognition of visitors. We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Mole Queen. Ben, at this point, I will turn it over to you. Just a friendly reminder, we have a five-minute time limit and the countdown is on your screen.
Mr. Mole Queen, are you there?
I'm here.
When you're ready, sir.
All righty, City Council, I'm sitting here wondering why it's so hard for you guys to email me back when I sent a cordial email on June third, two thousand twenty, at twelve forty-three P. M. about the lights that need change at the Dogwood Skate Park. We got about four lights left on. And I said, thank you about, you know, get the lights turned on, and no response back on that. And then in July, I'd be friendly to the guy with the skateboard construction company out in Pennsylvania, and I wrote you guys an email about that, how on his resume, he's done skate parks for many communities, including Van Wangeren's private skate park in his backyard. I believe he's the best skate park construction company to get the bid for the job when it comes to renovating Dogwood Park. And I'm sitting here wondering why, as eighteen years has gone by, the only new thing I see at the skate park is a new trash can, and there's nothing new at the playground, and our basketball court is so below quality of what it can be here in North Canton. And I'm sitting here wondering why, how are we going to be second place to Canton when it comes to a park? Because they're over there renovating Ninth Street Skate Park, and we're here still stuck in two thousand and two. And you guys want to sit here and call yourselves good-hearted Christians, but it's so hard to fix up a park for the next, you know, generation of kids. So, you know, at this point, my emails have gotten less cordial, and I wonder why I'm being ignored, because I'm here to remind you guys that you guys work for us. We the people, we the people vote you in, and when you fail to do your jobs like you have, Mr. Soretta, we the people will vote you out, and there's going to be a person that will fill in your seat and do your job ten times better. And at this point, I think, you know, it'd be best for the city of North Canton if you resign, because there's so many people in leadership roles that fail to lead. When I was at the school park, you know, during the drought of July that we had, I kindly asked EMT guy, you know, that works there, I don't know his name, who's got red hair, currently asked him, I say, hey, do you guys got some water bottles for these kids? You know, I said, it's a shame we don't get the water fountain on while this fake crunka stuff's going on, but, you know, can you guys at least give these guys some water so they don't overheat? And he wanted disrespectfully say how that isn't his job. So I saw Officer Ataya, who's driving by, who wants illegally arrested me, that dog would pull them. My former lawyer, that magistrate of Canton, Adam Wilkins, got thrown out, you know. I see he's a school resource officer, and I figured he would help these fellow kids that he's trying to protect. And he has the balls to tell me it's not his job. So, you know, from EMT to City Hall to the current mayor, who's too scared to have people come into the building with the mask on because of this crunka crap that State Representative Diane Grendel's actually working on the Rhode Island Ohio now bill to get rid of all this unconstitutional mask BS. But, you know, I'm sitting here, and, you know, there's a song by the band called The Replacements. I don't know if you've ever heard of them, but their bass player was in Guns N' Roses, and, you know, I'm going to quote them, you know, look me in the eye, and then tell me that I'm satisfied. Was you satisfied? Look me in the eye, tell me, then tell me that I'm satisfied. Hey, are you satisfied? And I go so slowly on everything I've ever wanted. Tell me what's wrong. Look me in the eye and tell me that I'm satisfied. You know, I'm so unsatisfied as it goes on. And, you know, I'm twenty-eight years old. I just watched my father pass away from pancreatic cancer, and one of your police officers want to harass me and try to give me a dogs-at-large charge that my lawyer, Dan Funk, you know, I decided to hire a good lawyer here in North Canton, now that I've just paid off the property tax and I'm paying utility bills. And I figure I'm going to go give North Canton tax revenue money, and my lawyer got that case beat. And, you know, I'm not going to sit here and stand for the disrespect, because, you know, you guys aren't going to drive me out of town. I'm here to pay my property tax, here to, you know, help fix up the park and help be a leader that this town needs. And, you know, I'm not going to sit here let this go on any longer, you know. So, you know, you've been on that council seat since, you know, for a while now, and I haven't seen, you know, you come out and clean up the park at least once, you know. And I don't expect any type of extra compensation by cleaning up Dogwood Park. I just know it's the kind of work that somebody in the community is going to have to do if we're going to have a nice mega sports complex that we can put there, that will increase tax revenue to this town, that will increase tourism to this town, that will help the citizens out, that will deter teen alcohol, suicide, and all, you know, everything that comes from that. So, you know.
Hey, Joe, the five minutes.
I don't know who you guys think you are, but, you know, I don't know who you guys think you are, but, you know, you guys aren't going to disrespect me like this while I greed the loss of my father. So.
All right. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
And Ben, is this just Joe Mole Queen, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Joe. All right, moving on to old business. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance forty-three dash twenty?
Revolt moves.
Warren, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds of the city of North Canton to be appropriated for current expenses during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
All right. Thank you. Chairwoman Warren.
We have talked about this now a number of times, and these are grant monies that we need to use. They were for the fire suppression vests and for some road projects. Any other questions?
No.
All right, then I move to adopt.
Revolt, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance forty-four dash twenty?
Move. Soretta. Revolt, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into Apple Grove Limited, thereby accepting its maintenance bond to guarantee certain maintenance improvements at the sanctuary phase four development.
All right. Thank you. Chairman Fonte.
Yeah, so it's just a performance bond that they usually have to put up to make sure that they, that the workmanship and, you know, all the details that they have with the roads, curb gutter and all that, they maintain and do what they say that they're going to do at sixty-one K. It's held there until everything's satisfied, and then they'll get the money back. If there's anything else to add, anybody can chime in. If, if not.
Move it. Revolt moves adoption.
Okay.
We have a second? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance forty-five dash twenty?
Revolt moves.
Warren, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance to amend and retitle Chapter eleven eighty-one amendments of the codified ordinances to remove procedural redundancies and clarify the amendment process.
Thank you. Chairman Revolt.
Thank you. We've, as we've discussed previously, both this ordinance forty-five dash twenty twenty and forty-six dash twenty twenty clarifies, the first, for this vote, clarifies the amendment process for the zoning code. And the second one, which we'll get to in just a moment, clarifies the process for amending the map, the actual application of the zoning code to, to properties. I don't think we've had any questions or comments. Are there any? Nope. If none, if none, then I would move for the adoption of ordinance forty-five dash twenty twenty.
Folt, seconds.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance forty-six dash twenty?
Revolt moves. Folt, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance to create Chapter eleven eighty-two amendments to zoning map of the codified ordinances in order to clarify the zoning map amendment process.
Thank you, Chairman Revolt.
Just covered.
All right.
Questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, I move to adopt. Second reading?
Folt, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance fifty dash twenty?
Revolt moves. Folt, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance to approve the twenty twenty codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to adopt new matter and to amend and repeal certain obsolete and conflicting legislative provisions.
Thank you. Chairman Shroya.
All right, as discussed last time and in the previous committee of the whole meeting, this streamlines and gets rid of some obsolete items, some conflicting things. It allows us to control publication and provide immediate updates, and it saves money. Ben, would you like to add anything to that?
So, last week, we, and the week before that, we discussed that there might be some changes in our proposed changes relating to the inclusion of inherited provisions from the Ohio Revised Code. After meeting with the Chief of Police, we have decided to keep the inherited provisions of the Ohio Revised Code in our code as keeping them in there helps with making, enforcing those provisions easier, makes how they move through the courts easier, and also changes how funding is distributed. Because we kept those inherited provisions, we did have to perform an audit of have any of those provisions changed on the state level, and do we need to incorporate those changes into our code? There were three major changes in the state code that we need to incorporate this year, most of which you have probably heard of. So the first one, which you probably haven't heard of, is a change in Chapter three-three-one, Operation Generally, and that creates new definitions for earphones and earbuds, and creates an exemption in the law that you can wear earphones while driving if you're on a motorcycle and using them for ear protection. The second change is in Chapter three-three-five, Licensing and Accidents, and this one you probably have heard of. The state law changed this year so that you only have to have a license plate on the rear of your vehicle and not on the front as well. So all of the provisions that go along with enforcing that. And then the final major change is in Chapter five thirty-seven, Offenses Against Persons. This was House Bill one sixty-six, which again, you've probably heard of, that raised the legal age to purchase tobacco to twenty-one. And that, there are also some changes in that provision that newly defined what vaping is in state law and where it's allowed and where it isn't. One other minor change that we did add was we added to the general definitions at the beginning of the codified ordinances, the terms O R C, or Ohio Revised Code, and O A C, Ohio Administrative Code. Any questions?
All right, anybody, yeah.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Man, yeah. Man, I just want to say, Ben, thank you for that thorough explanation on the changes. We appreciate that.
Yep, me too.
Okay, any other comments, anything? I move to adopt.
All right, Folt, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance fifty-one dash twenty?
Revolt moves. Folt, seconds.
Troy, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance establishing policies relating to the use of paper representation materials such as letterhead and business cards by members of city council.
All right. Thank you. Chairman Shroya.
All right. Yep, as previously discussed, this is the paper representation policy, city letterhead and city business cards. We did add that small change before that we would allow the cellphone in addition to the office number. Any questions on this? Comments?
I have a question, Shroya. It's Dominic.
Yep.
So, when it's an election year, which is every couple of years, is there a time where you can't use that kind of material because it seems like a conflict or something? Because it's an election year, if you're running for, you know, rerunning?
But what did we say on that? Is, doesn't it say something about sixty days? I think I remember something about that.
So there's an existing provision that prevents surveying constituents within sixty days of an election. And in these new rules, there are a couple limitations that are designed to prevent campaign advantages. So the first is that letterhead and business cards may not be used in conjunction with, as part of, or really while you are campaigning. So if you're, if you know that the purpose you left home for is to knock door to door to campaign, don't take your city business cards with you. And then.
I just wanted to get, thanks, Ben.
The second provision is that to use city letterhead, it has to go through the clerk, and hopefully the clerk would say, you running for reelection is not city business. You have not met the requirements to use city letterhead.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thanks, Ben. Anybody else? Any other comments?
Chairman Shroya, we discussed the amendment earlier this week. Do you still want to make that amendment?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry about that. I'm scrolling.
There was a proposed amendment to this ordinance to clarify the language surrounding discussing elections on city letterhead. So the intent of the amendment is to make it clear that if a resident asks you how an election works, you are allowed to respond and explain to them how something like a recall works. You just aren't allowed to advocate for the passage or defeat of a specific ballot item.
So you can explain the process, but not recommend something about it, right? Yeah. So, so everybody agree with that?
You vote yes for it, no for, against it, but you're not telling them how to vote. Is that what you're saying? In a nutshell?
Or you could say how the recall, yeah, basically, you could explain how the recall would work. You know, you'd vote yes or no, but you can't say, you can't make a recommendation. You can't say why you're doing that.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. So we need a motion to amend?
Correct.
Yes, we'd like, I think we, we have a motion to amend Section two C. Is that correct?
Yes.
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 And everyone should have in their packet the strikes and the additions. Is that correct?
Yes, and it was in the public packet as well.
Okay, so pursuant to the strikes and amendments to Section two C, I move amendment to ordinance fifty-one dash twenty twenty.
We have a second.
Folt, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, amendment carries.
Thank you, Darryl.
There's no further comment. I entertain a motion and a second to adopt a second reading of fifty-one twenty.
As amended.
As amended, yes, thank you, Darryl.
Revolt moves.
Folt, seconds.
Troy, seconds.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, Resolution six dash twenty?
Revolt moves. Folt, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
A resolution accepting and establishing a policy for the viewing of permanent paper records maintained by the Office of City Council, including Council's Journal, the Record of Legislation, the Codified Ordinances, and other historic documents.
All right, thank you. Chairman Shroya.
All right, as discussed before, this is the policy to address the viewing of the records, similar to what a library or a museum would have. It's, it's pretty standard. Ben, would you like to add anything to that?
No, that pretty much covers it.
Any questions or comments? I move to, I move to adopt.
Folt, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, may I have a, motion and a second to read by title only, Resolution seven dash twenty?
Folt's moves.
Is this a motion to adopt?
No. Did I, did I say adopt? I'm sorry, did I, I may have said that. Most, I need a motion and a second to read by title only, Resolution seven dash twenty.
Folt's moves.
Troy, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Ben?
A resolution acknowledging the loss of certain records and proceedings and accepting the replacements created by the Office of Council as more fully described below.
All right, thank you. Chairman Shroya.
All right, this is the digital replacement of the records. Again, I want to note that they were, they were saved digitally as a whole, and nothing is missing. This is just us being transparent. So any questions or comments? I move to adopt.
Folt, seconds.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to new business. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance fifty-five dash twenty?
Revolt moves. Folt, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area in the city of North Canton under Ohio Revised Code, Section four-three-zero-one-point-eight-two, approving related safety and sanitation plans and providing for oversight and review.
All right, thank you. Chairman Revolt.
Thank you. As we discussed last week, this will allow, on a limited basis, alcoholic beverages to move within a certain area outside an establishment. I think for the purposes of our discussion this evening, we want to remind those who are listening that we believe that a Dora will encourage economic redevelopment. It is a element in our overall strategy. We hope that it will encourage specifically redevelopment at the Hoover Complex to include more restaurants. And also, it's consistent, I think, with our vision for Bitzer Park. As I explained to one constituent earlier this week, under a Dora, it would be possible to attend a jazz concert at Bitzer and to walk across the street and bring glass of wine to the event. So we hope that when an investor looks at the Dora, he will understand for his restaurant, or she, that there is an additional economic opportunity associated with the Dora. It's also important to understand that these are tied to an existing liquor license. So there's enforcement capacity, and there's a five-year sunset in the Dora. And that is all I'll say.
Darryl.
Do we, go ahead, Doc.
I was just going to say, I, I had to get a clarification last week on the Dora, which is basically the zone. So let's say if you have fifty acres, up to one hundred and fifty acres that are, you know, involved in this, when you move from one location to the other, you have to discard your Dora cup and get another Dora cup.
My understanding.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure we were clear, because one of the constituents cleared me on that, and I, and it was, he sent me it, and I checked with Pat, and he said, that's the way the law is, that you have to do it. And then the city provides that cup to them, and then if they sell it to you for a, hopefully a reasonable fee, you know, you can move past all the areas, like if you're going to go ahead from place to place, or if you want to stop at a couple, you have to use different cups. That's just FYI.
Right. Also, Darryl, you know, mind me breaking in here. We, we discussed the addition and adding on to that kind of random little section that we had made. Were we going to talk about expanding that to the one hundred and fifty acres as much as we could along Main Street?
Well, I think at some, at some future point, we can. But remember, right now, it's tied to existing liquor licenses. So as, as those licenses may proliferate, we can expand it up Main Street. But right now.
Why don't we go all the way to North Main? There's already liquor license up at the highest level of North Main. You've got, you know.
I think that's something we could consider if, if we'd like.
Yeah, we got TDS and. Right. Right. And we stopped randomly at Eleven Street, which nobody knows where that's at. Great. Don't forget Grinders. Right.
All right, well, let's, let's do this then. If I could recommend that we adopt the first, go ahead, Patrick.
I was going to say, you know, you need to keep in mind that at every one of those intersecting side streets, as we move north, those all require a sign and sanitation plan. So that means a, you know, a trash can at every one of those intersections. And what we had proposed was mounting the signs on the trash cans so we would avoid pounding stakes in the ground, indicating, you know, comings and goings. But that does add a considerable cost to that. Not saying opposed to it, but just asking council to keep in mind the, the cost for, for that type of thing. And then that has to be maintained on a daily basis, or semi-daily basis, perhaps, maybe weekly anyhow, as far as the emptying of all those additional cans. So that's kind of the reason we defined it between Gazartis and, and Elton Cone, was because that seemed to be a manageable site to try it out. Maybe there's not enough action there, and you just move it north instead. I mean, like you say, you can, you adjust this to whatever area that you want. Some areas can come in, maybe there's not enough action down that far. Some areas can come in, maybe there's not enough action down that far south. Maybe Mark's point's right, maybe the action's up north, but to run all the way from, you know, Bachtell to, uh, Orion, uh, or, you know, these, you know, almost Orion, that, that's a big area to maintain.
Patrick, it's Dom. Uh, could, could you, if we wanted to switch it, like, let's say we do the south section sort of to break it in and just get the materials we need and just test it out. And let's just say TD, up towards TD and Grinders, they want to do something a little more aggressive with this plan. Can we just hop right up there and open that end up? Stop, you know, not contiguous, just jump up there and open that.
This is Darryl, Dominic, it's gotta be contiguous.
Okay, so, so, okay, I got you.
Yeah, but that's, I think that's just a semantic to work out. So for instance, you said, okay, we find that between, you know, Bachtell and Eleventh Street, there just really isn't any action. So you can abandon that door and just start a new door. You can see it's a pretty straightforward process. This isn't something that takes years to research or anything. And yes, it wouldn't be contiguous, but you could cancel that one and just go start another one someplace else. Or you, maybe the sub, maybe with the existing boundary, maybe you eliminate it from South Maine to Tenth Street, but then start it from Tenth Street, uh, and run it up to as far north as, as you were looking to do. So then it would just be keeping the existing door or you're just changing the boundaries. And that's what I think our consultant had said last week is you can amend the boundaries. You can include ones that, or exclude areas that just aren't doing for you what you thought it might.
And do we have to run it? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Explain what you mean by, what you were saying, that additional cost again. So I, I, I'm in a dark about that and I'm sure some other people. What do you mean by we have to keep, uh, whatever you said there? Explain that if you would.
Yes, please. Thank you for the question. So, uh, when I was visiting some of the other Dora communities, uh, looking for the part as it relates to the administrative side of this is the the safety plan and the sanitation plan and the signage plan. So we'll take them one at a time. So the signage plan means that for people who are pedestrians, they need to know when they are entering the Dora area and when they are exiting the Dora area. That has to be marked. And so as an example that I used, and I thought the best community that had the nicest approach to this that I felt met the North Can, North Canton, um, aesthetic standard, uh, was Old Hilliard. And they had, uh, these, uh, trash receptacles that were made out of stainless steel, black coat, powder coated. And on one side of the, the sanitation can, it said, you welcome to the Dora area. And on the other side of the can, it said, you are now leaving the Dora area. And they put these out on the corners of the streets that intersected with their main street. And it, it provided, you know, a place to dump the trash. It also provided the signage. So those signs cost money, uh, to have them, you know, made up. And some of those, we believe, uh, forwarded that information to the street department. We believe that those could be made, uh, in-house. They, you know, do require the cost for materials. The, the sanitation receptacle though can't be made in-house. We would need to purchase them. So we've been doing some, uh, searching to kind of get an air, an idea. The ones that we found in Old Hilliard, uh, were rather expensive, but their main street drag wasn't as long as what, what we, what ours is, but those were turning out to be in the tune of around six hundred dollars apiece. So we've continued our search and we've found something that we believe that would meet the North Canton standard, but that would be a budget friendly and they're like around two hundred dollars apiece. So all those side streets marked, like, you know, we go from Fifth Street, Sixth Street, Seventh Street, Tenth Street. Uh, you know, as you work your way up that list, we would have to drop in a can and a sign, at each one of those locations. So I'm not sure, I think, Ben, I don't know if you have that. Yeah, you have it up there. So one of those little triangles, um, would represent where a sign and a, a sanitation receptacle would be. We thought that would be the most cost effective. And it's on both sides of the street because, you know, it's not, the Dora isn't just, you know, on one side, it'd be on both sides.
So, and, and thank you for that explanation. I did not know that when I was looking at this map here. That explains it a little bit better. So on this cost, are, are you saying we are responsible or is there a way to pass that on to the Dora uh, holders or the Dora people that, that use this?
Well, uh, in the, in the Dora, uh, ten percent of the profits of the beverages that are sold in these cups are supposed to go into the Dora district to, um, deal with various things.
Okay.
So that would help offset that, yes, depending on how much is sold. I imagine, you know, in the first, you know, year or two, it, it takes some, uh, ramping up to get people to know that this is available. And then the more establishments there are, of course, the more success you have with, you know, activity breeds activity. The more establishments we can get in here that are restaurants that, that would, this would appeal to. Wow, that's a, it, it starts to ramp up pretty strongly.
Hey, Pat, uh, this is, excuse me, Mark, have, have, do you have any additional questions?
No, that's a pretty good explanation of some things I didn't realize. And I can see why you guys are randomly looking at that, those areas.
I, I, I have one quick question. So like if we, this is Dominic, if we, uh, like say we decide to add another section, Pat, do we go through the same procedure we're doing now, three readings and all that kind of thing to get a new section open?
Yeah.
Or do we just do a?
Yeah, you gotta amend the map.
Okay, so is that like three readings and we go through this rigmarole, basically? Okay.
And, and Darryl, before you answer, I also said that I would explain the, uh, the safety plan. So yeah, the, the police department then has to sign off on, you know, the area that they're gonna, you know, patrol, how they're gonna handle it, you know, whence this is in effect. So, you don't see a lot of, you know, Dora down, like, from what I've seen in the other maps, it's down a lot of side streets. You know, they like to try to keep it contained to a geographic area. Maybe it's, you know, downtown Canton, it's a lot different because they have a, they have a denser downtown where you can go east and west and north and south, you know, to make a square where we're pretty much looking at, you know, a north-south spine, if you will.
Good explanation. Thank you.
Go ahead, Darryl. I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, Patrick, you, you put your finger on it. The, the other element that we really don't know about, and this is the challenge we've got as the Dora grows in size, is that we do have to police it. And so I think, you know, probably from a policy standpoint, we as a council have to wrestle with how much of our police resources on a Friday or Saturday night, do we, or at, at another, another time, devoted to policing the Dora? And it, it, it would be easier to police if it is a smaller area than one that is much larger.
And again, I just want to just add that, that, the, the map that you have was really just a basis for a starting point to talk, the conversation. It just seemed logical. It tied into, as Ben said, you know, who are the liquor permit holders presently? But, uh, there's no means by, uh, any that this had to be it. It's up to council to decide what direction you want this map to go. So, and you, you have the ability to change it at any time.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And we can change it within, as, as you've noticed, Dominic, this is Darryl, uh, we can change it with, uh, committee the whole and, and three readings and it becomes thirty days, effective thirty days after, uh, the mayor signs it.
Yeah, I think.
So we can, we can move pretty quickly on it.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm liking it. I think it's definitely gives us more tools in our tool belt.
Well, um, what I, let me ask you, let me do this then. I think we're all agreed that we consider an amendment to the map should the occasion arise. Can we go ahead and adopt the first reading of this tonight?
Um, Chairman revolt, may I make a comment first?
You may, sir.
Um, in your, uh, packets you received, there was a date missing in the third harass clause. The repository has now filled in that date for me. It will be October fourth, twenty twenty is the second publication.
Okay, thank you. We need to, uh, we need to make that as an amendment?
No, you haven't adopted a reading yet.
Okay.
To be amended, so.
Alright, council, what's your pleasure? Do you want to proceed with the first reading?
I would recommend that. Keep it moving forward.
Okay, it's been moved. I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, um, I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance fifty-six dash twenty.
Revolt moves.
Full seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amending and re-titling chapter thirteen oh one residential building code of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
Alright, thank you, Chairman revolt.
Thank you. Um, I draw council's attention to fifty-six twenty twenty, fifty-seven twenty twenty, and fifty-nine twenty twenty. What I think we have here is the fruit of having SafeBuild and Marty, uh, operating our building department. Each of these three ordinances, uh, is in effect, provides a much, much clearer and much clearer lang, regulatory language for our, our code. And I think, you know, I think we've struggled in the past with, uh, uh, language that was clear and concise, easily understood. And Marty's done a pretty terrific job when you look at fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-nine. For the purposes tonight, for this discussion, fifty-six aligns the building code, our building code, with the Ohio building code. And it addresses a variety of, uh, elements such as, uh, that alignment, debris, sanitation, et cetera. And it does so in a nice, precise, clear fashion. Are there any questions? It's pretty cut and dry.
I, I, I did ask for some, uh, information last week and never received anything about what other people's code, uh, fees were. We were talking about increasing those fees. And I did, uh, ask for that and I believe people said I was gonna get it, but I never received it yet. So maybe they're, they're working on that. So I'd like to also see that still. I hadn't forgot about that.
Okay, well, I think that's something Marty can, can, can generate for you.
Absolutely. And I do have that here when we get to number fifty-eight. I can go through that for you.
Great. Okay, if, are there any other questions or comments about fifty-six twenty twenty? If not, uh, I move we adopt the, uh, first reading of ordinance fifty-six twenty twenty.
Full seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty?
Revolt moves.
Daria, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance to create chapter thirteen oh two permits of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton in order to clarify the building permit process.
Alright, thank you. Chairman revolt.
Okay, uh, this is, uh, this is an entirely new chapter. And as you'll note, it briefly and, and concisely delineates the process for obtaining a permit and establishes what all the requisite requirements are. And I draw your attention to thirteen oh two point oh four. That's where they're contained. And it also, uh, notes where the superintendent permits may, uh, withhold the reasons for which he may withhold a permit as well. Marty, do you have anything to add to this?
Uh, that fairly well covers it. Uh, you, what I might add is right now, we don't have language which prescribes when a permit is to be issued, when it's not to be issued. We also incorporated some language here to better work with other departments such as the Stark School and Water as they work with the engineering department in doing the storm water quality as well as, you know, utility departments.
I think is, is, uh, this is Darryl, uh, I think one of the complaints has been, uh, over the years or recently, which we've tried to address, whether it's concrete, uh, and some of these others, is that we're trying to eliminate the uncertainty for a contractor. This is what you need to do to do business here in town. And I think, uh, fifty-seven twenty twenty, uh, certainly makes it much easier for a contractor to understand.
Absolutely.
And we'll get more into that in fifty-nine twenty twenty. Are there any other questions?
I have a comment.
If not, then I.
This is Daria.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, this is, this is fantastic compared to some of the other stuff that I've read. And I mean, thank you for your work on this, Marty and Darryl and everybody. That's, I think it's awesome. So, thanks.
My pleasure.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, then can I have a motion to adopt the first, or I'll make a motion that we adopt the first reading of ordinance fifty-seven twenty twenty.
Full seconds.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance fifty-eight dash twenty?
Revolt moves.
Daria, seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amending chapter thirteen oh three, raising of buildings, specifically section thirteen oh three point oh seven A, fees for permits of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to set fees for permits for the raising of buildings, structures, or parts thereof.
Alright, thank you, Chairman revolt.
Okay, uh, I think this is pretty cut and dry, but to Mark's question, Marty, do you have some comparisons for him?
I do. And, and I'd like to start by saying to compare these apples to apples is really difficult as we do offer a unique service in that, um, there's not too many jurisdictions that do offer a one-stop shop, meaning uh, we do a lot of the same services that occur in different departments around the county. In some cases, we do all those services in one office. They come to one office and make application for their project, whether it needs to go to planning commission, the zoning board of appeals, uh, the building plan review, those processes, those fees are collected in that same spot as well. What I found in looking at the different fees, you, we have some jurisdictions may have a residential building department in-house. They may have both departments in-house. But not very many of them also did the zoning. So when, when I contacted Stark County, uh, they do have a fee that only covers the building department component of the demolition permit. And for the commercial, um, now this fee did include the, the state fee in that. And the commercial was a one hundred and three dollars. The residential was fifty dollars and fifty cents. Again, that also included the state fee. Now, for jurisdictions that don't have a building department utilize Stark County, some required a zoning permit or a zoning clearance essentially for that project in addition. And as I understand, City of Green was one of those examples and, and their zoning for commercial was an additional one hundred dollars and residential was fifty dollars. So, um, the next, and where we don't have, let's say the building department or the jurisdiction is utilizing the state, the state fees for demolition is three hundred and ten dollars for the first three inspections and, and another hundred and fifty dollars for each subsequent inspection beyond the first three. And looking at City of Alliance's. And looking at City of Alliance's fees, the commercial demolition permit fee was $200, and residential was $125. City of Canton, their residential demolition fee was $75, and commercial was $150. Maslin, now it does appear Maslin does their zoning with the building department similar to how we do the structure with zoning and building. Now, they had $75 for residential, $125 for commercial. Lewisville was $100 for the residential, $200 for the commercial. And that is the extent of the fees that I found. As I mentioned, not all jurisdictions such as Jackson Township require, they do not require any zoning clearance. And in fact, even when I called, they were, you know, a little uncertain that, you know, one of my questions was if a commercial building was to demolish the, the primary use, the main building, is there a permit for what happens to the parking lot? And who looks at the utility, those types of things? And, and it spurred some, some conversation on that. But that's the extent of, of what I have to share on that. I'm happy to answer any questions or seek out additional information if you wish.
Martin, would you explain to the, to the council as well, what it, what you would do, like say on a, on a commercial demo permit? Walk us through the process of what your department would do after that permit is issued before you have, you know, issued some sort of final sign-off. What, what all is it that you do?
On the commercial, they would make an application. There would be a set of plans identifying which structure or structures would be raised as part of the permit. Once, and along with that, there's documentation that is submitted for the EPA requirement, the, the NESHAP. That's the asbestos abatement program. They submit an environmental report which identifies any of the, you know, hot material that would need to be abated by a specialty contractor. Most commercial projects almost always include some level of asbestos, so there's always some type of abatement work as part of that. So, we are reviewing that information, including that in permit records. Once the permit is issued, and we do verify that the project does meet code, particularly where we may have some, you know, pedestrian conflicts. We, we of course want to make sure that there is fencing and making sure that the demolition process was safe. We would also verify onsite that the utilities would be disconnected and coordinate with the appropriate departments for the sewer, the water, the electricity, and those types of things to make sure that when they, when they do disconnect those, they're brought back to the property line, they're done in a safe manner, in accordance with the standards, as well as making sure that the excavation meets code as well, that they've, you know, not left any hazard, you know, below ground for, you know, a future property owner or construction anyway. And at the, at the final, of course, we check and make sure that everything was resolved. You know, as part of that process, we'd, we'd look at it from, from a zoning compliance standpoint too, is, you know, how is the, the property going to be maintained in the future? Is it going to be mowed? Are they doing some type of landscaping? Those, those kinds of things.
Marty, this is, this is Darryl. You've given us a good description of the tasks prior to demolition that we perform. How many man-hours do we have in a demolition?
That is entirely dependent on the project, the size of the building, how experienced the contractor is. There are a number of highly qualified demolition contractors. Now, when a property owner is, is seeking the services of, of these very experienced, highly qualified contractors, they do a lot of the heavy lifting, and they have everything prepared. They pretty much know what's needed to safely raise the structure and clean up the site.
Marty, I guess I, I didn't make my, my question clear. How many hours do we, man-hours do we spend performing the functions that you just described? Do we have three man-hours in it? Is it, is it two teams? Is it five? What is the impact in that project?
I, on a commercial, commercial building, I would guesstimate in the ballpark of five man-hours on the average. You know, as I, you know, I was highlighting the, you know, qualified contractors, they get through the process fairly quick. And when we're having to walk, we are a very customer service friendly department. We will spend the time with the customers to explain the process, not only explain the process, but explain the rules for doing that. And when we're having to do that, it does take a lot more time to go through that. Those, we'd have more time into it.
Okay, so, so, but, so the point is, the point is that we have an individual that all-in, we're probably paying $40 to $60 an hour to help manage this, correct?
Approximately.
That's correct.
Somewhere in that range, A. B is this, is that how much does it cost to knock a building down or a house? What, what was the cost on East Maple? So let's put this $200 or $100 into some perspective. What does that $150 compare to, to the cost of actually knocking a building down?
523 East Maple was a single dwelling, Carol Bear property. And we had to, you know, we got three estimates. We also then had to have an asbestos contractor go through to determine if there was asbestos in the house, there was asbestos. So we had to hire an asbestos contractor to remove it. And then everything else wrapped up, you're around $15,000.
Okay, so I think that puts the fee, the permit fee into some perspective to total, overall project cost. You know, just, just as an aside, I think, you know, you know, one of the things we, we ought to do, maybe in January, is we ought to look at an omnibus fashion all of our fees, whether it's water, whatever. Because I don't think we're touching a lot of stuff. So, it might be a good opportunity as we get into the budget cycle and we get into next year, we begin to look, we look at, we look at all of our fees. And I just mentioned that. You probably should.
This is, this has been an ongoing discussion between administration and finance for a few weeks now. And Gina had actually brought that to the table. And as I've had a chance to get my head wrapped around it, we agree. We think that all the rates, all the fees for everything that we do, should be examined, reviewed every year. Administration should bring over where they are with stuff like this, with, in every department that it touches, where there's a rate or a fee. And, you know, give counsel that opportunity to address that and, you know, to make, if needed, minor adjustments on a more regular basis rather than a, a major adjustment infrequently. It works better for management and city resources and gives, I think, a more sustainable service to the constituents. Gina has had experience with this in Lewisville. I think, we think it's a great idea. I'm glad to hear you think the same way. And we can work in that direction if, if counsel was so.
Okay, well, I guess that's, that's conversation. I guess I have digressed significantly. Do we have any more questions about the demo phase?
Now, Marty, I appreciate you getting back to me on that. You know, as I told you before, I went and looked at those to see if there's a point of reference. Anytime I see fees up, you need a point of reference because historically, North Canton raises their fee just because they're North Canton. And because of that, there are people that don't want to even come here. And because of that, that means the other people charge more for our own, you know, different constituents. So we can't have that little classing. We need a reference point of what everybody else is doing. So we're not just out of line because we need the money somewhere. So I really appreciate that as we refer to other people and see what they're doing. I think it's a, a good example of that, and we should be using that all the time. So thanks.
And, and Mark, to, to your point, I think one of the things that by having somebody come in and, and, and work through the process in town, I will remind everybody that the county has a demo program that can assume a significant part of the cost. And so this gives us an opportunity to link up that party with the county for the purposes of a grant. And I, I think Alex Zumbar has talked about that privately with some of us. Hopefully, as we get into the, if, when we get into more CRA action and demo, we may be able to assist people in, in using county grant dollars for demolition. So, are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mark. Any other questions or comments at this time? If there are, and I would move that we adopt the first reading of ordinance 58-2020.
Troy, a second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 59-20?
Revolt moves.
Hold seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance to create Chapter 1310 Contractor Registration Requirements of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to clarify the process by which contractors are registered with the city.
Thank you Chairman Revolt.
Okay, again, consistent with our theme of being a little more business friendly, Marty has rewritten a, has created a new chapter, 1310. You have it in your packets. It contains a very simple and very concise process for registering contractors with the city. You notice that there's, the language is clean. In terms of content, there's proof of bond and the process. Marty, do you have anything to add?
I would like to point out, the fee remains the same on the contractor registration. One of the most notable changes here is there is no requirement for the $10,000 bond, which has historically been required and seems to have been no value or benefit to anyone. Not only that, it's been a point of contention with the contractors that they've had to pay the hundred-plus dollars to obtain this $10,000 bond each year. And, and again, nobody seems to benefit from that. The other notable change there is we do define the minimum limits for the liability insurance. The current legislation does not identify an amount for that liability. And we have the two different amounts, the $1 million for the general contractor, who of course is responsible for not only their operation, but all of their subcontractors. But, and the subcontractor liability insurance was identified or proposed at $500,000.
Are there any questions about this? If not, then I would move we adopt the first reading of ordinance 59-2020.
Second reading, right?
Should be the first, is it not?
Oh, first, I'm sorry, you're right. Sorry.
Don't confuse me, I'm old.
I apologize.
Confused.
All right, there's a motion. Do we have a second?
Troy, a second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 60-20?
Tell moves, Warren.
Hold second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance to amend and retitle Chapter 909 Registration of Contractors of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton.
All right, Chairman Fonte.
So, this particular ordinance is talking about construction permit fees. And when we're inside the curb, gutter, sidewalk, driveway, which is in the public right-ofways regarding the permitting process. So Marty, do you have anything to add to that? Or 60?
Or 60, yes. That essentially was the cleanup and the, the reaction to the former item in basically cleaning up a lot of the language that we would no longer need with ordinance 59-2020.
Any other questions? If, if we have none, let's go ahead and adopt the first reading of ordinance number 60-2020.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll set revolt with second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 61-20?
Revolt moves.
Warren, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance amending Chapter 907 Street Excavations of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton, specifically Section 907.02, 907.03, and 907.06, and creating Section 907.07.
All right, thank you Chairman Fonte.
Yeah, this is just really covering the street work, I believe. It would be more like the fees and the procedures of the proper protocol and inspections and responsibilities of the contractors. And I think it talks about bonding here too. Marty, did I hit that right, or is there a little more there to cover?
Yeah, no, that, that's pretty much it. There's a few, and this ordinance was in collaboration with building, engineering, as well as administration. So I did work with the Director of Administration, Mr. DiOrio, as well as the city engineer, Mr. Graham. And I, well, obviously, Mr. DiOrio's on. I believe Mr. Graham is on the call as well and can chime in here. Essentially, we had clarified bonds versus deposits. The other notable item here was to clarify that the street opening deposit that normally, well, that's currently required by the legislation is, is not required under this proposed language for the replacement of existing sidewalks. There was also some provisions in here which clarified, you know, specifications for the various projects that occur in the city's right-ofway, well as some reference to the traffic control, which currently is not identified in the current legislation.
Thank you, Marty.
My pleasure.
Are there any other questions there? Rob, do you have anything to chime in? Are you good?
No, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, let's adopt the first reading of ordinance 61-2020.
Hold seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 62-20?
Revolt moves.
Hold seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds of the City of North Canton to be appropriated for certain expenses during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
All right, thank you Chairwoman Warren.
Hi, thanks. I talked to our Finance Director today.
Hi, thanks, I talked to our finance director today, had a few questions about this. So the monies, when we needed to pay out the past law director, were always split between finance and council. And so those are what those two expenses are for, and that would be, and then the other payment is for Krugliak for the PIA that we need to attach to their estimate for their entire rest of the year. Any questions on that? This is an emergency because we do need to start payments to Krugliak, and we'd like to make that final payout. So if there are no objections, I move to adopt.
Revolt seconds.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, and may I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
Revolt moves.
Warren, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries, and finally, a motion and a second to adopt ordinance sixty-two twenty under suspension.
Warren moves. Warren, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, that concludes the legislative agenda. Department reports, Deputy Director of Administration.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind council back a few weeks ago, you'll remember how we did agree to go with a company called Backflow Solutions Incorporated, BSI, and they will be managing the, the city's backflow program. So this week, over two thousand letters are going out. So in case you get calls or anything from constituents, the program starts with BSI effective October first. And as you know, that's to manage, you know, the cross connection control program that we have. So this time of year in fall, a lot of irrigation systems will be shutting down. And how it just changes the process is it's actually more efficient where their plumber that they choose, the contractor they choose to test their backflow system will go online and submit everything, real time data. No more papers being mailed or faxed or anything lost, and the information is in the letter. So everybody that we currently have on fire is having a file on, having a backflow device. It explains the program, and letters went to the contractors as well that we have on file, explaining their part. So just in case we get any calls on that.
Kathy, is there a price on this, a standard price like a hundred and fifty, or what is the cost to do this? Is that in the letters, well?
There, there, there's no charge to the homeowner. They, they pay their contractor, whatever their contractor charges them. There is a fee to the contractor that they pay on, on, online.
Do you have a clue what that is by chance?
I think that's, Patrick, do you remember what, what that, what?
Sixteen ninety-five?
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
How much? Ninety-five cents.
Okay, that seems reasonable.
Yeah, the contractor would pay that. So that, and I just wanted to say tonight, I've gotten a couple of texts from people. If you've gotten kicked out of your email, I was notified by our IT consultant that there was a brief outage with Microsoft Office three sixty-five, just nationwide. So it just, you have a remote connection to our server if you're accessing email through your phone. So your exchange email password will just need to be re-entered. And if you don't remember what that is, then you can let me know and I'll, you know, reset it for you. But that's the reason why, been getting a lot of errors. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, thanks, Catherine.
Sure.
All right, next up, Director of Administration.
Just one item that I'd like to put out there, that we'll be sending out a news release here in the next day or two regarding the natural gas aggregation program for the City of North Canton. We struck a rate last Thursday or Friday for the program. So the rate is three point one seven seven, three dollars and seventeen and seven tenths. I guess is how you would say that. So it's three point one seven seven for the measurement of a cubic feet of gas. And that rate is, is locked for four years. So it made sense to me that while we're at historic lows in, in the natural gas pricing, and compared to when we started this fifteen years ago, we were at like fourteen dollars in MCF. So at this rate, this will give those that are on a fixed income the opportunity to, to know that for the next four years, if they're in the program, that their rates are fixed. They can, of course, opt out at any time without penalty. Those that are already in the program won't need to do anything to stay in the program. They'll automatically be enrolled. Those that are out of the program and opted out would have to opt in to get into this program. And those that were, like, say, somebody just, you know, moved into the city, you know, somebody sold a house, moved into the city, those would be considered, opted in automatically, and they would have to opt out if they didn't want to. So letters are going out from the supplier, which is Volunteer Energy. They had the best pricing for us this year. And the letters will explain all of what an individual need to do if they wanted to get out or they want, you know, if they want to get in. So council should be aware of that so that in case you get questions, you can refer them to administration. We'll be happy to walk people through that. We've, we've done that historically, where the elderly may be a little confused with the, with a letter that they may get, and we'll help walk them through that, make sure they understand what it is they're getting. So, thank you, that was it.
Patrick, did the price come down from the last contract?
I believe the last contract, we were at three and a quarter. So it's fairly flat, just a little down.
Gotcha.
I've been watching it all summer, and it's been surprisingly fairly steady over the summer in spite of the whole, you know, thing with the COVID and shutting the economy down and all this kind of stuff. If you get into the market place on it, you know, typically, there's a lot of volatility, you know, maybe somewhat around hurricane season, that just didn't occur this year, so. Overall, a, a good rate, lowest that we've had.
Thank you.
Patrick, this is Daryl. If people wish to verify that the rate is competitive, and I, and I'm doing it right now, they can go to the PUCO apples-to-apples website and look at the rates that are available. This is pretty competitive.
Yeah, again, it's not, you know, we've kind of taken a different, I think, more holistic approach here. We're not in the energy market, we're not in the commodities market. This is not a full-time occupation. The idea is to try to give, to get as best rate as can be got for those that don't want to spend time doing this. I'm sure if you wish to put a lot of time and energy into it, you, and hit the timing different, you'll probably find the price a month from now that could be lower, might not be lower. But for those that are, you know, relying on someone to help get them a good price, I think that, you know, the city has, you know, fulfilled that obligation.
Thank you.
Well done.
All right, nice job, Patrick. Is that it for you, are you done?
Yes, sir, that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Mayor, you're up next.
Thank you, President Peters. I appreciate the discussion tonight and presentations by everyone. Just to comment on the DORA, I appreciate the discussion and the questions and the, the thinking on this. Again, for it to be a tool for investing in our community, to attract new food establishments and also complement the existing ones that we have here in our city. Main Street is a wonderful corridor for us, and this, I think, would just be one more tool in the toolbox. Dominic, as you mentioned, that it'll help our Main Street remain a corridor of opportunity. And I just think it's one more tool that we'll be able to use, and, and cautiously for the benefit of our community and, and hopefully for our food establishment. So I thank you very much for your discussion on that. And as we look forward to adding new things to make our city a little more attractive for our residents and visitors and businesses. So thank you for the time, that's, that's all I have. Again, Patrick, thank you for your investigation in the gas aggregation costs. So that's all I have right now. I hope everybody has a good week, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, Director of Finance, Gina, you're up.
I have no report tonight, thank you very much.
All right, very well. Next up, City Engineer, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I'll discuss our progress on our East Hill project. We started work literally two months ago yesterday on July twenty-seventh. We're two months in. Tomorrow, we should finish all that sidewalk on the south side, should be our last day of the sidewalk. For have a few days of restoration. We want to get all the grass seed and stuff behind the curbs. We want to get that planted while we still have a growing season. That way, that'll lessen the erosion impacts this winter. And then we'll start on the roadbed. Their completion is ninety days, so it's basically October twenty-seventh. And it is Ohio, it is the fall, it is raining right now. But it's a great fall, and I dare say that so far, we're a little ahead of schedule. Maybe a week and a half. Along with that one, and, and really no surprises. We're going right along with, with our budgets, quite happy with that as well. Second project, obviously, our East Maple Street project. The county engineers contractors working away on the bridge. I guess it was probably in a little bit worse shape than, than, than we had all anticipated, which is another reason I'm, I'm so glad we're doing the project. We're still on time, still going to get the work done within that forty-five days. Out there, our first section of sidewalk is actually going to get poured tomorrow. And also next week, we're going to be closing the intersection to northbound in and out of the university at the East Gate and Washington Square signal. Still, we're going to work with a plaza owner and a university to still have, you know, access from other, other, other entrance and access points. But we'll keep the east-west traffic flowing. We're going to get started on that big decorative intersection. We're going to do one there, kind of like right at the square of town, where it's all concrete in the middle with the brick crosswalks. So that, that will keep traffic moving in one way, no north or no south, but we'll keep east and west flowing with the signal. And then when that's done, we're going to do one crosswalk at the westernmost entrance in the Giant Eagle, the couple of weeks after that. And then once the bridge is done, we're going to give that same treatment to the Mar Court in East Maple intersection. So a lot to do out there, but things are really moving right along, and I'm quite happy with the progress in just two weeks out there.
And are there any questions?
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Rob, thanks for that update.
All the updates.
Okay, moving on, Council Clerk, Ben, you're up.
As I told council, and as the public may have noticed, the agenda looked slightly different from our standard regular agenda this week as it was the first one generated using the Granicus software. And next week will be the first committee week where we use the Granicus software to fully generate the agenda and all items on it. So look forward to seeing a hybrid agenda as we ease into fully transitioning into Granicus. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ben.
All right, thank you, Ben.
All right, Member Foltz?
No report.
All right, Member Warren?
No report.
Member Fonte?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Mr. Malqueen, sorry for the loss of your father. Peace be with you, my man. Anyhow, everybody just be safe out there, and keep in mind, if you guys need anything in your wards around the city that we need to expose or talk about, let me know. I'll be more than happy to do it like I did with Stephanie. That's all, thanks.
All right, thank you, Dominic. Member Revolt?
No report.
Member Soretta?
No report.
And Member Troy?
Got a few things. Thanks, Joe, for speaking. There's a lot of legislation going on right now, and it's making it easier to do business in the city. And I greatly appreciate that. I appreciate everybody's hard work on that. And Ben and Daryl, thank you for your hard work on the rules that we've been working on. And the depth that Ben has gone into on that has been fantastic. So just wanted to say thanks and buy and support local as much as you can. That's it.
All right, thank you, Matt. Okay, final call for new business to council? Seeing none, our meetings calendar for the remainder of the month, or I'm sorry, remainder of the month, for next month, October fifth will be Committee of the Whole. October twelfth will be regular council meeting, the nineteenth Committee of the Whole, and then the twenty-sixth, to round out the month, will be regular council. That concludes our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Revolt moves.
Troy, a second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned, have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.